Tuesday, March 15, 2016, Manistee City Council Meeting to Order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, can you please take the roll?
Mayor Kenny.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
Present.
Councilmember Zalinski.
Here.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Whitlow.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Gustad.
Here.
City Manager.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here.
DPW Director.
Here.
Public Safety Director.
Here.
City Engineer.
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Comments on agenda? Is there anyone who'd like to comment on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk around the consent agenda considered by the city manager to be routine manners. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the latter portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, notification regarding next work session, consideration of proclaiming April as Parkinson's Awareness Month, and consideration American Cancer Society Mayence County Relay for Life. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to council to action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, supported by Councilmember Whitlow, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will you please take the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Gustad.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration of a resolution, partnership agreement with the Little Manistee River Watershed Conservation. At our meeting of March 3, 2016, the Planning Commission adopted a motion to recommend city council support of the Little Manistee River Watershed Conservation Council and their partnership. A resolution for a partnership agreement between the city Manistee and the Little River Watershed Conservation has been drafted for consideration. Representatives from the Little Manistee River Watershed Conservation have asked to give a presentation to city council on their efforts. Are you here? Okay, so we'll just move on. Is there a motion to approve the resolution for partnership?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Whitlow, supported by Councilmember Zalinski, to approve the resolution for partnership agreement with the Little Manistee River Watershed Conservation. Is there any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Whitlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Gustad.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of purchasing two sanitary sewer pumps for the Sixth Avenue Pump Station replacement. The Sixth Avenue Pump Station replacement project and Riverbank Sewer Project are currently out for bids. The pumps for the new station have a long lead time for manufacture and delivery. Therefore, the city has solicited competitive bids. Three bids have been received as follows. Pumps Plus Inc. for $31,0980, Kennedy Industries for $32,560, Curve Pump &amp; Supply for $42,975. Staff recommends the purchase of the flake pumps based on bid price, lower electrical consumption, past success with the flake pumps, and the service representatives from Kennedy Industries. This purchase is funded through the recent water and sewer bonds. At this time, council to take action to approve.
I make a motion to take action to approve the purchase of the two flint pumps and associated hardware from Kennedy Industries in the amount of $32,560.
It's four.
I have a motion by Councilmember Smith, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Gustad, to approve the purchase. Is there any further discussion?
Are these... What type of pumps are they, Jeff?
They're submersible pumps. They're similar to most of the pumps in the rest of our pump stations.
They're not... Are they a grinder?
They... Are they classified as a technical?
They're not classified as a grinder with that cutting heads on them.
They're not technically a grinding pump, but this one... The flake pumps have a ceramic cutting head on them, so they do reduce clogging and obstructions.
Another question. About six years ago, we installed some pumps in that station?
We installed one.
One?
Yes.
So we're happy... Is this... We're asking for two. You're asking for two... Is one a spare, or what are we doing with that?
What we did is, in the current pump station, there are... We used to have three pumps for that, two that were installed, one that we used for a backup. The configuration of that station required it would plug up with rags and debris almost every two days throughout the year, and every single time there was some rain event. So what we did is researched, and two of the pumps had to be rehabbed. As opposed to putting the money into the two older pumps, we purchased one new pump, which is a flake with the same exact pump that we're talking about now, a little different size. And since that time, we have only had to pull that pump one time in two and a half years. So we've reduced that maintenance 700 times since we've installed it. And we also had the company do an energy audit, which showed that we were saving about 30% in energy consumption. Because that was a brand-new pump, we've been running that pump exclusively. Normally, the pump stations are set up with two, and they alternate. So one will pump, the next time it calls for a pump to turn on, the other one will pump, so that it shares maintenance and wear on both pumps. The two new ones are for the new pump station that would replace the old one off.
Thank you. I have a question. It talks about a monitoring relay for high temperature. Is that all it does? I'm referring to being smart pump or smart run technology. I look, just pump up on the internet, and it shows that it has smart capabilities. In other words, if it is clogged, it will run in reverse and throw everything out, run forward and back. Do we have that technology?
I'm going to refer that to the expert.
The actual expert isn't here, but I know probably what he'll say on this one. So it has the technology. If we get a flake, we will have a similar capability. What you're talking about is actually add-on to other pumps, and you wouldn't need it with a flake pump, because that has the smart technology. What it does is it keeps track of the torque, and if you have... If that torque kind of increases, it will release, which will allow kind of... If you have a rag or something to kind of let loose and come through it. So you don't need the add-on smart technology, but if you get the flake pump, if you do what we're recommending. If you look at another option, you may want it. That's something I think you should consider. Evaluating that pump has the capability, but with flake, you wouldn't need it.
Okay, when I was looking at researching it on the internet, it showed that under this pump, it showed that technology.
Right, it's part of it.
It showed how it worked, and what it did, and how it unclogged itself. And to me, it's just cost-effective. I mean, every time you send somebody down, it's been two or three hours, pulling the pump and repairing it, bringing it back, you know, it's money. So I was curious of how much that technology costs.
In this particular situation, you're going to get that specific tech... You're going to get a very similar technology. You're going to buy it with this recommendation. If you were looking at another option, I don't know the cost offhand. I'd have to check on it. But with the other options, it could be an add-on. With this option, you're basically getting a... It's not the exact same technology you're talking about, but it's the same idea, where it's a smart technology that understands the torque on the system.
Okay, so we're going with the stainless steel pro... I'm sorry, I got so many questions, but a stainless steel product. What's this cost to repair these? Sometimes, when you get into stainless steel and you get into these pumps, it costs a lot if you have a breakdown for repair. How does this compare with these other pumps that we use? Do you have any?
In regards to the actual material cost, or the time to repair them?
Both.
Both. The time would be similar, because you're going to... You're basically going to pull the pump out, pull the impellers off, and put them back on. I don't know off the top of my head the difference between the two props, which I could probably get that for you.
My last question, I guess, would be about the warranty. It says they're warranted not to clog for a year. What does that mean? If it clogs, you're going to come and take it out and unclog it? What does that warranty mean?
If we had... Really, with the flake pumps, we haven't tested this theory yet on, because it's never happened, quite frankly. So I guess I couldn't answer that for sure, what their specifics of the warranty are, other than if we had a pump that was continuously clogging, recurring, they would come and swap it out. That's probably the bottom line. But we've never had that happen on the pumps, on the flake pumps we spec that have been installed in other communities. We've never ran into it, so I guess I can't speak to their follow-through on that.
If they had in other communities, how long have they had them in other communities?
Well, with the flake, I guess there's different impellers, but flake pumps for... I mean, we've had them for decades in other communities. We've been working with Kennedy Industries and flake pumps for other places for... I mean, personally, for 15 years. And this particular impeller, this N impeller, which is the one that has the ability to kind of work through all these clogging issues that they had at Sixth Avenue before. I'm not as familiar with that. We haven't seen it. All I know is the success you've literally had here in Manistee with it.
There is choices, I think, four different impellers, but I was...
Yeah, the N impeller is a bit... There's a very large advantage to using that impeller.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Seeing none, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Gustad.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Harvard Commission. All appointments by the mayor subject to council approval unless otherwise specified by statute ordinance. Dominations for council appointments do not require second. After a member of council nominates an individual for appointment, council shall vote on the nomination. Majority vote in favor of the placement of nominee is required for appointment. The following applications have been received. For the Harvard Commission, there are two vacancies, turns ending 10/31/18. Two members can be non-residents if they own real estate in the city, or own a business or profession directly related to commission areas. This is a council appointment. We had two applicants, Fritz Bowman of 1,200 Cutter Ridge Drive and Glenn Zering of 321 Fifth Street.
I would like to nominate Fritz Arbonne with 1,200 Cutter Ridge Drive.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, supported by Councilmember Smith, to appoint Fritz Bowman. Will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Gustad.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Now I'd like to appoint Glenn Zering of 321 Fifth Street.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, supported by Councilmember Smith, to appoint Glenn Zering. Will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Gustad.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to notices, communications, and announcements. A regular part of each council meeting is report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. Tonight, we'll hear from Ms. Stacy Bytworth, who reported on activities at the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening. Thank you for having me this evening. Okay, I just wanted to come and report on the Chamber of Commerce. As you know, it's a membership-based organization. We're funded by our membership and events and programs that we put on within Manistee City and the entire county. Our Board of Directors, we have currently 14 directors that sit on there. We do have a representative from the city on our board, which is Jeff McCula. We have an executive committee, Patty Price, who is our chair for 2016. She's the CEO of Federal Credit Union, and I've listed the other executive committee members as well. The next slide is our membership by geographic location. I just wanted to kind of put out there, but obviously, as you see in the blue there, is the city. So the majority of our membership through the Chamber of Commerce comes from the city of Manistee. And then the Chamber membership by category, I wanted to capture a quick snapshot, so you can kind of see what different areas that we have, participating agencies, organizations, and business sectors, and that kind of divides them out there. If anyone ever wanted a list of that, I could kind of give you more of the membership, and it is currently on our website. You can search by those different categories on the website. The Chamber kicked off 2016 with celebrating our centennial, so we have been around for 100 years, which is pretty exciting. We held our centennial celebration at the Ramstall Theater, and we utilized the Ballroom and Hardy Hall for that event, and as you can see, I've captured some pictures there. We also wanted to thank all of our sponsors, our corporate sponsors, regular sponsors, that helped us put on that event. It was well-attended. We had almost 200 people at the event, celebrating our business community over the last 100 years. Next is just a little snapshot about the Chamber, our different events that we put on throughout the year, our programs and services, and then our festivals. And then I'll go into kind of some highlights to furthering our presentation of those events and programs that we did last year. Our education seminars, we put on a few of those every year. Last year, in partnership with the DDA and the Chamber, we put on two social media presentations for membership. And it wasn't only for membership. We did open that up to the entire community. And then we also partnered with MSU Extension to put on a tourism workshop as well. A couple highlights from 2015 is our Government Affairs Committee. We kind of reestablished that committee. We meet once a month on Thursday, the first Thursday of the month, and we track issues that were related to the business community and other organizations that we can help out. If there's something, there's an issue that comes up, please call the Chamber or attend a meeting. We do have people... And Eric Gustad is our chair of that committee. And then the other thing we did in 15 is we joined the Northern Michigan Chamber Alliance, which as an associate partner, so that's with other chambers throughout Northern Michigan, so we have a voice in Lansing. If issues that we want to come up, we can get behind that and have that support of that group. The Government Affairs also hosted in 2015 these three events. We hosted Representative Ray France and Representative... I'm sorry, Senator Boer, Proposal One. So we had those at two different events, and then we did a congressman roundtable with manufacturers in partnership with Consumers Energy to bring Congressman Meneszek and Heizinkah, and there's a couple pictures of that event. We did hold that at the City Marina. And then the other thing we kicked off in 2015 that we're really proud of is a leadership program for our entire county. Throughout the country, most chambers have a leadership program, which can identify and motivate current and potential leaders in the community, so that we can give them an overall picture of everything in our area. And this is our 2015... Or 2015-16 class participants. They're still currently going through the program right now. It's a nine-month program. That shows you all 11 participants in the different sectors that they come from. We do have some new individuals to the area, so they have gotten well-connected and networking with the different participants within this group. The leadership program, there's... We started out with a retreat in September, and those are the different days that are on the calendar. Tomorrow, as you can see, we're going to do Tribal Day, and we do spend all day at these different areas, and we have many presenters that give us and donate their time to educate this class about these different areas. We are going to put applications out, probably the beginning of June, to be submitted by mid-July for the next class. We are hoping to have around 15 for the incoming year. The other highlight we had from October of last year is our Business Expo. The Chamber has put on this since 2007. Well, last year, we decided to partner with Launch Manistee to add a career expo to that piece. It was sponsored by Westshore Bank. We held it at the Little River Casino Resort, and we kind of decided that this would be a well-received from the business community as well, to get those younger individuals in our school systems looking at the opportunities that we have right here in Manistee County. We had all six area high schools participate in that event. We had about 50 exhibitors as well. The Business Awards Dinner we hold in November every year, and I just wanted to highlight those individuals that received awards. This year, Alliance Beverage... Or my apologies, in 2015, Alliance Beverage won Business of the Year. The Historic Vogue Theater won Small Business of the Year. Jenny Powton from Century 21 won Business Person of the Year. Big Bear Sportsman's Club won the Community Action Award, and then Matt Nizaki of Nizaki Insurance was our Master of the Year. These awards are all voted on by the community, so that's pretty successful that these individuals and businesses receive those awards. I just want to touch on the different festivals that the Chamber have throughout the year. Obviously, Manistee National Forest Festival is fast approaching us. We are celebrating eight years this year, so we're very excited about that. Grapes on the River is held downtown, going to be July 23, and then we hold the Festival of Trees during the Slay Bell Weekend. I do want to thank the city and their staff that really helped us put on these events, because I know anywhere from Chief Bachman to Jeff McCula, the staff to plan these events and help us get set up. We really appreciate that time and effort that they take to do that, as well as everybody else. The different programs and events that we have, the Chamber puts on, is the Admin Professional Luncheon, which is the first event that kind of kicks off this year. The Blast Off, which is our annual golf outing we're going to have at the Heathlands this year. It's kind of moved around from the Country Club and National. We're going to open it up to the Heathlands as their Chamber member as well. And then our Awards Center will be on November 10. Business After Hours is a monthly networking event that the Chamber holds once a month. I've put up our spring and summer schedule, so the next one will be at Grill 44 in Bear Lake. We do try to move these all throughout the entire county, so that we give other members an option to have, and we get people from the city to go up to Bear Lake, Bear Lake to come down to the city when we hold events here as well. If you want the full list of the schedule for '16, it is on the Chamber website. We do have a scrolling on the front page of our site with all our upcoming events. Then the different Chamber collaborations and partnerships, this is just a quick snapshot of the different people that we partner with. I do want to point out the Manistee Main Street Downtown Development Authority. I do sit on the Economic Restructuring Committee, and then my assistant, Diana, sits on the Marketing and Promotions Committee. So we are connected, and we do collaborate with the DDA in that respect, and then just some of the other different agencies that you can see up there. Chamber staff, myself, Diana Wall, who's the executive assistant, she is kind of my right-hand person. She's been with the Chamber for 22 years. And Jacob Bergman is the new office assistant that we recently hired, so we're excited to have him on board. And I just want to thank you for your support with the Chamber, and as always, my door is always open. So if there's any questions or concerns that you have with the Chamber, feel free to call me, make an appointment, or stop in.
Thank you, Stacy. Appreciate all the work that you do on behalf of our businesses throughout the county. Thank you. Next, we move on to Concerns and Comments. Citizens and comments. This is an opportunity for citizens, comment, and municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizen attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, which are limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Is there anyone who'd like to comment? None, we'll move on to officials and staff. State Perk. State Commander.
State Attorney.
State Attorney.
DPW Director.
Several things for you tonight. Last year, we came before you and let council know that we had some issues with the 301st section of our Riverwalk. We've got some very severe erosion underneath the sidewalk that's across the Riverside Hotel. We're in the process, and the city manager provided some of that backup information. So we're in the process right now of designing a repair for that. It'll likely be some sheet piling along the sidewalk, removing the sidewalk itself, backfilling and then putting it back. We've reached out to the property owner to see if there's any collaboration that can be done with adjoining Marina property as well. That design process will take us through the end of this month and probably a little bit into April, and then we intend to submit for permits from the DEQ and the Corps of Engineers, and then competitively bid the repairs to that section. We're hoping that we can get a contract award before council in early May. We're shooting for the first meeting, but we'll get it before you as soon as possible, and then anticipate construction through the end of May and June, targeting to get it open before the 1st of July. In anticipation, or because of, I believe it's a safety issue, we've actually closed off that section between Tamarack Street and Cedar Street. So those that are traveling the Riverwalk, if they want to continue through, have to come up to the River Street level, or actually Water Street level, and then back down to bypass that section. Okay? And we'll be bringing...
This will be on council's agenda for the first meeting in April for discussion, but we just wanted to give you some information to start thinking about it, because it is... Why, is there something that is necessary to give a prepared?
Thank you.
Then just a couple dates for you. These are posted on the city website. They're also... Are posted on the city Facebook page, and the ads will be in the paper, and we sprinkle them over the next couple weeks. But we've determined that the City Trash Hall will begin April 11th and run through the end of April this year. And again, that will be published, and details are available on both the website and the Facebook page. Spring has thankfully arrived early this year, but a lot of our programs don't start in March, and lots of people are outside raking their yards and doing lawn work. So we also have stepped up the dates a couple weeks earlier than we normally do for the brush pickup and the yard waste. We're going to do brush hauls beginning Friday, April 15th, as the regular scheduled term, and then the following Tuesday, we'll be starting with our weekly yard bags on Tuesday. Now, I will say that as we have time, like this week, we've had a crew that went out and picked up all the yard bags from the people that were out working in their yards over the weekend, and we'll get to those as we can, but just wanted to let you know that the regular scheduled stuff doesn't start till mid to late April. And then we've had trouble securing a contractor to plant trees the last couple of years, but we have a contractor in place, a local contractor, and so you'll see the advertisements for tree planting that will be going out, and we hope to have that completed next month as well.
Thank you.
Jeff, the bags will be... One of these bags will be in when?
Well, we've been trying to time the bags so that we don't have to throw any away. They're biodegradable, and they do degrade, so we actually timed it really well last year, and we used up every bag we had in inventory. So I thought we were on top of things at the end of February to order the next batch, but the weather changed. So they have a four-to-six-week delivery time, so they should be here 1st of April, within the first week of April or so.
And at the DPW, do you still have the dumpster for the bags?
We don't. What we are doing is purchasing some blocks that the Local Ace Hardware has, and we're going to create a bin at the recycling center. So instead of paying United Waste to have a dumpster there and to dump it, we're going to allow people to place their material within that concrete bin, and then we'll haul that away and save that expense. We are lining up trucking right now, but we think we'll have that in place by the end of this week.
Thank you.
Just a couple questions, too. First of all, you mentioned the tree planting. Wearing a different hat for this question, are you consulting with Right Tree, Right Place, and making sure that we're not planting trees that are going to grow into lines or that are going to have to be removed later?
Yeah, that's really the mission of the Tree Commission. They've gone... The Tree Commission has gone through, studied species, and have created a list of species that they believe are appropriate to grow within the city Manistee. So when residents sign up to purchase a tree, they can pick from that list, and we've got pricing from our contractor on each of those species.
Excellent. And then the small brush pickup, is there a diameter that you're trying to stay under for that small brush pickup in spring here?
We've never set a diameter. We've never set a diameter for that, no.
Okay.
Oh, one other question, Jeff. The trees, cutting the trees, you guys are on schedule for that?
Yeah, we've actually got caught up. So we probably have about two weeks left, and we'll be caught up with the list of trees that have been submitted and approved by the Tree Commission.
Do you know how many trees?
Are left on the list.
Or total on that list? Did we cut down?
We've probably, we've probably cut in the neighborhood of 20 to 30 already this year, and we've got about 20 to go. And we've also done a lot of trimming along the plow routes and along sidewalks, sidewalks as such.
Thank you. Lisa.
Public Safety Director.
Deputy Director.
City Engineer.
Deputy Director.
Councilmember Bean.
Yes, I would like to ask and feel out everybody's feelings on adding something to our next work session, and that would be discussing, like, an attendance policy or discussing whether or not we should talk about, is it just to, is it justifiable to give somebody antenation when they've missed a lot of meetings? Now, this is kind of like before, before council, and I brought it up as a citizen when Sid Scriminger was a son of city council. And the reason I'm bringing it up now is because I have several people who are asking me to bring it up. And looking into my own personal future, I know that there will be times that I can't guarantee that I will be here either. So I, I just feel like we should have some sort of a policy about it, and we should talk about it as a group in a work session.
My last one is to put that.
Do we need it needs to be supported?
I'm asking it to be...
Of course, I want something for the work session.
Well, it would be brought in a work session. I'd like to have more than 20.
Work session? You know, I think there's commissions and committees that spell out their policies and excused and unexcused absences and such as that. But there is nothing in the city charter or nothing in the council guidelines that addresses the issue, and it may be appropriate to have that discussed in the work session.
I would like to hear from the city attorney as to elected official and what, what we can, what restrictions we can put on that. I'm not making myself clear, but...
Yeah, I can look into that. My reaction would be that you don't have the ability to put any restrictions. Someone's elected to office, they're elected to office, you can recall. We have provisions in the charter on what you can do. But my initial reaction would be that there's nothing the council can do. But let me check into that. I haven't looked into it. Thank you. So I'll do that and then communicate to all the council.
And when I was in Frankenbooth for the core training for newly-elected officials, it did come up among other municipalities, they do have things in their ordinances and charters in regards to it. So if other communities are doing it, maybe we can find a few examples.
Anything else?
That's it.
Councilmember Zalinski.
Yes, I have a question for you. How is the park that we, a positive for arsenic? How are we doing with that, finals, the park? Anything going on with that?
Nothing new on it. During the budget process, we've had some discussions on how we would come up with funding in order to address it. And we haven't, we haven't solved that issue yet. If you recall, the two options would be to remove, remove the park entirely. And the second option would be to seal it, remove all the wood chips, put a barrier that would prevent human contact with the soils, and then replace the wood chips. Off the top of my head, I think that second option is about $35,000. And then has components that would need to be done every two years, such as the staining, and then components like the wood chips that would have to be done every five years. So we haven't identified how we would fund that yet.
Don't misinterpret this, but I brought up the Health Department, and they have a person at the Health Department who has dealt with this in different areas in the state, who is up to date. Have we talked with that person?
I've, we've played phone tag for several weeks, and we've never actually spoken on the issue.
So before we make a positive decision, we would get his input?
Right, yes. And we're still working with our brownfield consultant, our environmental consultant, on what we need to do as far as the DEQ now that we've identified that we've got contaminated soils as well.
I just want to make sure we're exploring all the options. Thank you.
Councilmember Goodspeed. Councilmember Smith.
Yes. Jeff, boat launch. How are we doing on pay tubes? I know we've got ramps out down on First Street. Is there a problem with the machine down on First Street?
I'm glad you asked. I meant to bring that up earlier. At First Street, we put in three launches due to the weather breaking. And as soon as that happened, the finance director ordered the coins. Banks don't carry enough coins. There's $1,000 of coins that we use to supply that machine. We expect delivery of that on Thursday. We're going to take the, take it out and get the power run to it Thursday. So either Thursday or Friday, First Street will be operational. I checked with the company that we order the pay tube from for the Arthur Street Boat Launch. It's being painted, powder-coated right now, so it should ship out by the end of this week, and we'll have that installed as soon as that, as soon as it arrives. And we'll probably do some sort of, try to get a little bit of press release on that so people understand what it is and make sure that they understand, you know, like a seasonal pass will work at both sites.
Okay, thank you. And I would like to thank Dr. Bowman and Mr. Zarin for their applications for the Harbor Commission. Look forward to your participation. Thank you.
Councilmember Bowman.
Also like to thank Mr. Bowman and Mr. Zering for joining the Harbor Commission. Thank you very much.
Mayor Proton Gustad.
Two things. The first one is just to let council know that AES is presenting to Benzine County Board of Commissioners by tomorrow night to collaborate and secure services for core business functions through AES to provide to Benzine County as well. And that should, I'll let you know updates at the meeting, but I wanted to let the council know that. Also, I want to, you know, take a minute to formally and sincerely apologize to some of my fellow council members, city staff, most importantly, the residents of Manistee. My attendance at the council meetings has ablated the very core. I want to assure you that I take the responsibility of serving, I'm counsel, very seriously. It pains me deeply to miss meetings. I hate it. With that being said, I want everyone to know that all of my expenses to this point, other than one, for all the time I've served, have been work-related. I don't miss just to miss. I'm not on vacation. I'm not running around, you know, doing things other than coming to council. I'm not retired, and I don't, and I don't work a part-time job. I don't have a typical nine-to-five job, and I don't, I would, sometimes I work weekends, nights, and holidays. I have a job that sometimes has me up at 4:00 a.m. and not getting home until 10:00 p.m. I have a job that supports five different counties from Manistee all the way to McCosta. And with many companies, I'm being asked to do a lot more with a lot less. I can't hide more than I'm trying to hide, the fact the last few months have been very demanding on my time. About my job, however, I cannot provide for my family, nor can I serve this community to the best of my ability. I also want you to know that each and every time that I've missed it, I've notified the mayor and the city manager. And although it kills me to miss meetings and not participate in discussions and decisions that impact this community, I take comfort in the fact that I have the utmost confidence and respect for the rest of council to handle what is on the agenda. I know the city is in good hands, and I would expect that this council would understand and support their fellow council members who may be absent due to no fault of their own. Who knows? There might become a time when someone else, and else may need to miss a meeting, or settle for that matter. And if they are faced with missing a meeting, whether it be to care for a family member, work, or vacation, I will be there not only to support them, but to take on additional responsibilities if necessary. I certainly won't look for ways to punish them, dock compensation, or have them removed from council. We have enough challenges before us, but balancing the budget, developing sound strategies, and maintaining quality services to our residents, to start tearing each other down is the wrong answer. In my opinion, we should look for ways to support and collaborate one another. We need to work together to make this community a great place to live, work, and play. Thank you.
Thank you. I, for one, you do not need to apologize. I do know, as councilmembers, sometimes work and life get in the way. And I know Mayor Proton Gustad has always followed through with other commitments on supporting the city. So as far as I'm concerned, I need an apology, but I appreciate your comments, and I'm sure many citizens here appreciate that. Thank you. And with that, I want to wish everybody a good Easter season. I hope the spring break is a safe one for all our students. And I hope everyone who's traveling and tourists. With that, I'll take the motion to adjourn.